Going a little bit outside of our bounds tonight, but we have a guest. Former BZA and Planning Commissioner Veronica Buchanan. And I've asked Veronica to come forward and lead us in our prayer and our pledge. So if you'd stand with us, please.
I've totally forgotten. Dear Heavenly Father, we're thanking you for this day that you have bestowed upon us, dear God. We're asking you to come into this meeting tonight, Heavenly Master, and crown their minds with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to make great decisions for this great county. Continue to bless our mayor, our president, and everything about this world, dear God. And Father, thank you for all you do for us. This is my prayer in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic to sustain one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Veronica. I just couldn't resist the temptation to put you back to work a little bit. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. We have no minutes to approve tonight, and we have no items withdrawn or deferred. But we have one item we'd like to add to the agenda, and that will be the reapproval of a final plat. I believe it has expired, and I'll need a suspension of the rules to do that. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. This is a final plat. The item number is 18-2131. It's for Web Bend. It's five lots on 3.59 acres, zoned RM, located on Web Road. Timothy and Margaret Villaveeux are the applicants. This is a request for reapproval as the subdivision plat has expired. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, Commission members. Hope everybody had a happy and safe holiday season. It's good to have everybody back at the beginning of 2020. As Mr. Phillips stated, this is a plat that was previously approved back in December of 2018. You'll recall that we did change our subdivision regulations about a middle or so of last year to allow final plats to, instead of having a six-month expiration time that had to come to the Planning Commission, we allowed it to go to a year. Unfortunately, this came in for recording right after our meeting last month, so there wasn't a whole lot that we could do, and it was already outside of its year timeframe. So we've looked over the plats. The comments that we asked them to address have been addressed, and with that, they're just asking for reapproval of this. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
We have a motion and a second to approve 18-2131 for Web Bend. This is a final plat approval request. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6A, we have two items that are scheduled, two rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings tonight. And I'll go ahead and remind all those in attendance that these rezoning requests will be heard before the full Rutherford County Commission on February the 13th. That'll be a Thursday evening at 6:30 PM in this room. 6A, item number is REZ20-001. Veronica Buchanan. Location 2120 and 2134 Butler Drive. Commission district is 18th. The county commissioner is Alan McAdoo. Size of the site is approximately 22 acres. Tax map is 126. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is LI for light industrial. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As Ms. Phillips stated, this property is, two properties actually, is being requested for rezoning to light industrial. You'll recall property to the south, right there on the, at the intersection of Butler Drive and Joby Jackson Parkway, was recently rezoned to light industrial in the county. That was back in April or so of last year. So the applicant would like to zone this, exit these properties to light industrial. There are no specific development plans for the property. The applicant did indicate they would like to market the property for a possible manufacturing business or possibly combine it with property that's to the south, is zoned light industrial. In your agenda materials, you'll also see that there is land that was recently annexed and zoned into the city of Murfreesboro, which is, I'm sorry, to the west of this subject property, which was zoned general industrial. We don't really have a comparable category in the county to what the city did with that particular property. This map hasn't been updated to show the new city limits yet, but there was a map that our GIS planner did today. I think that was one of the ones that he had on there. Now, it would have been a separate attachment. That would have been separate.
Oh.
Yeah. Let's see, bring that up. Is there anything under there? Okay, all right. It didn't make it on there. That's fine. But the property has been effectively annexed into the city, and again, it is a, it's property directly to the west. So all that to say, at this point, you know, no necessarily any development plans currently for the property. Access to the property, of course, is shown as would continue to be from Butler Drive. The right-of-way that fronts the subject properties was annexed into the city of Murfreesboro earlier in 2019, so any right-of-way permits for new and modified access points would have to be done through the city of Murfreesboro. Also, as far as any buffering is concerned, any development, if it's adjacent to residentially zoned property, would have to install a type 3 buffer, you know, primarily, again, being surrounded by industrial zoning. That really won't be as much of an issue. There may be some issues to the north side of the property, but that's really about it. This is an application, as I stated, it's more speculative in nature. The property is located along a corridor that is increasingly becoming more in commercial or industrial in nature. This is to be expected, quite frankly, the fact that this is so close to the Joby Jackson interchange with I-24. So that's, again, that is to be expected. And you can see on the, Mike just pulled up the city's mapping, kind of see the subject property, and that's the area, that's GI, that was recently annexed into the city, and he's highlighting the subject property. Again, the property is immediately adjacent to other light industrially zoned property in the county and immediately to the east of, again, city zoned property, that is zoned for industrial purposes. So, you know, this appears to be inappropriate zoning. As far as staff is concerned, we'd recommend approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is present.
Any questions for staff at this time? Ms. Buchanan, if you'd come forward.
Veronica Buchanan, 5825 West Gum Road, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. This is our family's farm, and my dad's getting old, and we're kind of want to do something similar. I sold my property down, probably, how far is my other property from here, Doug? And Kenny Pipe bought it, and it's really beautiful how they laid it out and stuff. I kind of want to do something to that aspect for my parents.
Any questions for Ms. Buchanan at this time? Thank you, Veronica. Ready for a public hearing? This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item number REZ20-001 for Veronica Buchanan. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve.
Say aye.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number REZ20-001 for Veronica Buchanan. Any other questions or discussion?
Question for Doug or Mike. I see in this packet, for the first time ever, that I've seen this particular document, looks like this Titan crash data.
Yes, sir.
Is that something we'll be seeing for all?
This is something that, I'm, this is a tool that's been made available to us through the GNRC. They compile this information using, of course, the Titan database and everything, and they've, they're developing tools. They're kind of in their, I won't say infancy, because they have moved along pretty well. But as far as functionality, everything, it's only going to get better. So this is something that I, that I would like to start including in all applications. Yes, to answer your question.
Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion to approve carries. Thank you. Once again, this rezoning request will be heard before the full county commission on February the 13th. Item 6B, REZ20-002, Shaheen Sepavon. Location is Shelbyville Highway, US 231. Commission district is 6. The county commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. The size of the site is 5.3 acres. Tax map is 149. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CG for commercial general. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant would like to zone the subject property to commercial general. You can see on the map that's on the big screen, and also there in your agenda packets, you'll have a couple of exhibits showing the proposed location. You can see it's adjacent to a residential subdivision across the street. You can see Christiana Middle School almost pretty much directly across the street, and you see where the access is, where there's a crossover right there in 231 for that. The applicant has indicated that they would like to construct a used car lot on the property. Commercial general is the first commercial zone that does allow for motor vehicle sales. They would also have a multi-base shop on the property for car repairs. There's information in your agenda packets regarding his hours of operation. I've outlined it just a little bit there, under the proposal details in our staff report, but I won't go into just a whole lot of detail with that. Again, that information is there for you to review. Access to the property would be from Shelbyville Pike, so any new or modified access points would require TDOT approval because of that. We typically, when it comes to rezoning requests, we'll share a lot of the information that we have with our county schools. This wouldn't have necessarily any impact to the attendance at the school, but since it was right across the street, we made sure that the central schools had a copy of this, that they knew it was coming. Their request was that if this is approved, now, this isn't something you can condition approval upon, but if this were to be approved, they've asked that any access points be to the northern part of the property in order not to interfere with any of the school traffic, especially, you know, during pickup and drop-off times. So just to make you aware of that. Of course, park and maneuvering areas would need to meet county regulations as well, as well as a type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties. This property is located in the suburban belt character area. It's also along an urban-style arterial in our comprehensive plan, which do anticipate and make recommendations as far as commercial uses and densities and things are concerned. We do have as staff several concerns about this, especially from a floodplain and drainage standpoint. With that, I am going to turn this over to Mr. Hughes to have him go into a little more detail with that.
All right. This is going to be quite a challenging piece of property. As you can see, I've got the stream layers turned on. You've got where Christmas Creek and Lidle Creek come together, and this is Lidle Creek once they join together. So you've got a significant drainage basin coming through the back of this property. You've got stream buffers 60 feet on each side. Another thing with that is the flood zone. And I'll turn on the flood layer for you. And you can see much of the property is in the FEMA flood zone, and you see a straight line here, which, in nature, you don't have any straight lines. This is where the Lidle Creek flood study was terminated, so most likely, you've got additional flood zoning, floodplain, should say, that will extend back up into here. So this property's got, like, significant challenges with drainage. Another aspect that we have to look at will be the soil. The soil of the property is mostly eghum, EG, and that, I'll read you a few things from the USDA. Now, this is just from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Most areas are subject to occasional flooding or ponding. Runoff is slow. Permeability is moderately slow, and available capacity is high, so it holds a lot of water. The hazard of flooding or ponding is the main concern of management. So that's, that's going to be a challenge. When finding a suitable soil site, you know, may or may not be an issue, there appears to be a little bit of bradable in the back, but this is, like, again, I said, this is just from the USDA, so it's not an actual soil scientist going out and locating stuff. But these are a pretty, pretty good indication of the soil type, and you, you'll see a lot of this eghum soil, which is, we've had some trouble with that soil in the past, along creeks and rivers and streams. A lot of times, you could farm it, but other things, it's going to be a challenge. Going back to the floodplain of that, where these streams come together, like I said, we won't be able to do any work inside this buffer back here, but because this is in a flood zone and the storage of vehicles has, is also regulated, so the storage of vehicles would require that they be elevated above the flood, base flood elevations. So with this, we're looking at, so it says 65387, almost 654, and there's a 5254, so the flood zone probably comes in, back in here. So most of the sites probably, you know, going to be, have to be elevated. So when you feel in a flood zone, we, in the county, require a compensating cut so we don't lose our volume in that flood storage area. So if they fill in one area, we're going to have to do a compensating cut somewhere else. And like I said, in the back by the, the stream buffer, where they can't cut there because that's got to stay a natural vegetated state. And as Doug alluded, let me swap over to pictometry. They don't want, the schools, this is the entrance to the school site, and there's a little bit of a slope, and you can see the guardrail here anyway, so TDOT would probably not allow a driveway access here anyway. They would most likely require it to the north on this side. So we don't have a direct, direct crossover for a driveway, so that means somebody wanting to visit the site would have to come in, turn right into the site, turn right out of here, jump over to the turn lane, which is already in place for the school, and then make a U-turn to go north. So that's kind of an awkward movement there. But like I said, it's, it's a challenging piece of property, and it's, it's going to need a lot of work before we could approve a site plan on this one.
Mike, with all the floodplain area there and the limited access as to where we can make a cut to compensate, can we make that a non-floodable property to keep the cars from flooding and without kicking that water on the subdivision that's behind it?
It will be a definite challenge. Like I said, with most of the property in the flood zone, if you feel, say, in this area closer to Lidle Creek, you're going to have to cut somewhere higher to make up that volume. So it's, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's going to be, you're going to have to sharpen your pencils and work pretty hard to figure, figure this one out. So I would also, like I said, going back to the flood study, you can see that straight line. FEMA and their infinite wisdom decided to save some money and terminate their study. So we would require that the design team continue with the flood study up Lidle Creek so we could see the full impact of these two streams coming together. And would this, this, you know, flood zones typically don't stop at a straight edge. They, they, you know, they taper out with, with the land. So it's going to be a challenge, I'll say that.
Are there any shots that we have of heavy rain periods that we could pull up?
Well, a lot of times when you're by a creek, river, or stream, the water comes up pretty fast and then goes down. A lot of the imagery that we have from pictometry was during the wet rainy season we had in February and March of last year, so which a valuable tool that we have as well. This area didn't see the rain event of, that we saw in the northwestern part of the county for the May 2010 floods. So like I said, by creeks, it went up pretty fast and then went down in a, in a day or two. So we don't have a lot of photographic evidence of that, but, you know, FEMA studied it and, and said that, you know, we've got some issues with the floodplain. The soil type itself, to me, says that water stands in this area all the time. It doesn't drain. You've got some issues with ponding, so it's going to be a challenge to, to get this, this one to work.
Also appears that there are a number of houses and lots at the end of North Wagon Trail that are under that same floodplain area. Do we have a history of what may have, what those lots may have experienced?
Looks like the, those lots may have experienced some, but if my computer would catch up, so these, you know, lots at the end of the cul-de-sac are in the flood zone, and these were built and developed before my time, so I don't know if they've been elevated above the floodplain or were built under an old map. Let's see. We've got, come on. So there's around a 653 elevation, so yes, the flood would come in here. Looks like a lot of these houses are in the flood zone here, and kind of go, it's flowing to the north and west, and it's got a nice little hook right there. I'm sure that has a little hydraulic jump in it as well when water's trying to make around that hairpin turn in heavy rain events. So yes, we would not want to impact these lots to the west as well.
Mr. Chair, a question for Doug, if he may help peek my memory, perhaps deja vu all over again, but it seems like I recall a car lot in the very recent history up and down the 231 corridor. Perhaps it was closer to town, and I think they had some, a few little issues, but I think it just wasn't, I don't believe that it, that it passed because it was just premature, or, do you, do you recall that, maybe just a couple of months ago?
Well, I remember a car lot further down toward Shelbyville, or going toward Bedford County, go on, it'd be, if you're going out, it'd be on your left. Now, that one was approved. There was some flooding issue with that, but there was also a big high point in that property. I don't recall, unless I'm just, I'm racking my brain, I can't think of anything just right in this area. The one I'm thinking about's a little further out, it's that, it's a little further, that's right there, that CG property, right there, yeah. Yeah, that, that little CG property right there, that's the one I'm thinking about. That one was approved. I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. No, I will say, as far as non-residential zoning in relation to the subject property, the closest non-residentially zoned property, of course, being across the street, that's where the school is, that's institutionally zoned. As far as a commercial zone on that property, the closest one, I think, is about a half mile, I had written that in the staff report, about a half a mile or so to the north, and that's at the corner of Crescent Road and 231. You're at that. Now, this has been a little while since that's been approved. There's actually going to be like a convenience market, gas station on that property. We actually saw a site plan for it, but for one reason or another, that just never came to be, and the property's currently for sale. But that's, I can't think of anything else out that way. If one of the commissioners is remembering something I'm just not, I mean, feel free to chime in.
Other questions for staff at this time? The applicant here, would you please come forward? If you would, give us a brief description of what you, what your plans are for that lot.
First of all, I want to thanks Mr. Phillips for pronouncing my name. That's not an easy job to do. Second of all, I hope you guys are having a good night. Sorry, I'm keeping you guys here tonight. I'm sure you guys want to be at home with your families. The, my name is Shaoyan Sepavan. Short, I go by Shea. The plan for the property is to do a used car lot. We're currently in business in the city limits. We're on College Street. We've been in business since 2017. We take pride in what we do. I would not try to get in the, the work that you guys do as far as zoning is concerned and flood zones and things like that, but what I do, I'm really good at, you know, and I take pride in what I do. Most of the time, when you think about auto repairs and you think about car lots, you think about a messy business. But every night, if the employees don't do it, I try to clean things up and keep things organized, because when you come the next day, you want everything to be clean and, and nice. Plus, people drive by and see, see your business, see how you're operating, so I take big pride in that. So what we would be doing is just purchasing used vehicles and reconditioning them and selling them. I don't do many, many repairs, other than the customers that I have that want to come back and get, get their repairs done with us. I mainly need space to store cars and display them for sale, and we need an office, obviously, for, for our sales staff, and also a couple of bays for detailing and reconditioning, like I, like I mentioned earlier. We, we purchased the property with the idea of, you know, it being on the main road and be, having good visibility, you know? I see a lot of businesses going down 231. There's a Candy's Campers, which is a little bit closer to, to town on the same side of the road. There is, I believe, there's a company that sells trailers on the opposite side of the road and maybe further towards Shelbyville. Those are some of the businesses that I've seen just throughout the years driving by. So that gave me the idea of purchasing this land and, and possibly doing this, this with it. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
The drainage concerns that the engineer shared with us, I'm sure tonight's not the first time you've heard those, so what kind of plans have you and your engineer talked about in terms of mitigating the drainage issues for that property?
Well, I've spoke to Mr. Huddleston about the property, but we haven't made any plans yet. I mainly just wanted to, to come here and do this first and, and proceed from there. He helped me with the current place that we're at right now, three years ago, so I decided to, to go back to him about the same, this property as well.
Shea, thank you for coming, and I do have a question. It looks like the total property acreage is a little over five acres. Should the drainage and the cut and fill needs be an issue, is there a, is there a minimum amount of acreage in your mind that you have to have to make this a viable project? I mean, I mean, what do you have to have out of that 5.3 to make this? I mean, what do you have to have out of that 5.3 to make this work? And I guess if the engineer says, well, we've got to take, you know, two acres, or we can't use two acres because of the flooding issue, is that going to squelch your deal? I mean, out of the five acres, how much do you have to have to make it work?
You bring up a good point. I was thinking about that as well earlier. We don't need the full five acres. It's always good to have more room in our business, but currently, we're working in half an acre. So anything from an acre to an acre and a half would be plenty for us. That's definitely a good point that you bring up.
So if you could get two used car lots?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes, is this on sewer, or is it to have to depend on septic system to go in this eghum?
It'd be a septic system.
Okay. Other questions at this time? Thank you. Thank you. This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 20-002, Shehan Sepavon. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. If you would, give Gail your name and address, please.
Steve Trina. We've talked a lot about the cul-de-sac, or the floodplain area. And my wife and I own the house. It's on the cul-de-sac. It's 149 North Wagon Trail. And right now, the floodplain, as it stands, would cover the property at about two inches, which would be well below the floor level, which means the garage would probably be flooded and underneath the house, but nothing of major importance would be touched. But if the floodplain changes and comes up because of this construction, I'm a little concerned that it could actually do some damage to the house.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Michael, his comment is valid, and I think I know the answer, but I guess I want to hear it for public record. It's basically illegal if we were to develop this property and the consequence change from the topography. If we were to add more water to this gentleman's or any of those people on the trail or whatever that subdivision street is.
Yeah, Nick would be involved with that.
Yeah, I mean, you basically cannot add more flooding to a neighboring property.
No.
Right?
No, sir.
For the listening public, it's truly illegal to do that.
Yes. You're not supposed to impact the rate of runoff or the volume of runoff to the neighboring properties. So that's what we look at very closely.
If you're not, Mr. Joe Waldron's farm, and they tracked it up a few months ago, some long narrow tracks. And I assumed that there'd be a lot of homes built there, or one home per track. In fact, I saw some young couple out there mowing their track. Did you send out notices to the buyers of those tracks?
Well, we send notices out to whoever is the property owner of record. So, I mean, that information should be pretty up to date. So we did receive some phone calls about this. But, I mean, we do have some people that didn't speak tonight. But, yes, we did, to answer your question, yes, we did send notices, as we all, plus we placed a sign. I was, I did it myself, I put the sign on the property about the rezoning.
It just looked like it lended itself to homes being right there with the school. That creek, I've fished that creek, got a lot of fish in it, and I know that creek. And you're talking about a challenge, that is going to be a challenge. And your recommendation is?
Well, if you look at our staff report, I mean, staff did recommend denial of the application, not just for the drainage concerns and things that we had, but if you look at our recommendation, I'll just kind of summarize it. You know, the property, as I stated a little earlier, is in the suburban belt character area. Shelbyville Pike is an urban-style corridor, which do anticipate commercial-type uses. That being said, and we've discussed this a time or two in this meeting regarding, you know, a timing element for all of these things. Just because the plan may recommend commercial uses up and down corridor doesn't necessarily mean every single property has to be zoned for non-residential use. The closest non-residential zoning, as I stated earlier, is across the street with the Christiana Schools. But that's a limited zone. I mean, really, we created that zone for larger type uses such as schools or large community assembly type uses and things. If you're looking at it just from a standpoint of purely commercial uses, like retail, different things like that, the closest zoning really is a half a mile up the road, you know, at the corner of Crescent Road and a little pocket there and 231. You've got Crescent Road, you have a small office, you've got the campers, the CG zone. A lot of those were existing uses, at least the CG and the OP. The CS was zoned that way after the fact. So the concerns that we had, we kind of looked at everything. We looked at the drainage concerns, knowing that any kind of non-residential development, especially with a car lot, you're going to build up a lot more than you would say for a house. That was a concern we had, and the fact that there were beyond where the school is zoned from just a purely commercial standpoint, again, you just don't see a whole lot of zoning like that close by.
Well, with all that you've said, and I just, I feel uneasy about this, since this auction hadn't been too far in the distant past, maybe some of these owners don't know what's going on tonight. So I'll make a motion to deny.
Would you repeat that motion again, please? I have a motion to deny based upon staff recommendations and other information, and also a second. Other discussion before we vote? Other comments? We have a motion and a second to deny. Item number REZ 20-002 for Shay. All who are in favor of that motion to deny, please say aye. Is there any opposition? The motion to deny carries. Thank you. Doug, anything else?
No, sir. We don't have any staff reports. Mike, did you have any?
Our next meeting is scheduled for 9:00 AM on January the 27th. That'll be in the planning mess. Any other questions or comments? Jim?
Mr. Chair, we'd like to have a nominated committee.
We do that at the next meeting. We do it at the next meeting.
Anything else? Thank you for your attendance and your participation. We are as earned.